Am I what? Yeah, we're ready, we're ready.
Call this video the Brunswick County Planning Board's order. Presentation tonight on the UDO.
Thank you. We just talked with the road picket attorney before having Chris Bridget present to us about stormwater. We're really excited that you guys are here to talk about the UDO and refine it to the UDO to make things better, as well as learn more about stormwater. And I know that this is straight from remote, I'm excited that she's able to attend remotely. We're recording this, so we're also going to do some quick introductions of staff. But some really quick logistics first. In the back room, there is water and snacks. At any point in time, if you need them, feel free to show up and purchase some snacks. We've sent a link out of the both PowerPoints, not the intro PowerPoint, but the regular PowerPoints, with all the amendments, with a link to our website, so you'll have access to them remotely. Additionally, after this meeting, you have questions or concerns, feel free to talk with us. We'll be happy to meet with you individually, either in person or remotely, whatever is best for you, and discuss any other texts and notes. A lot of them you'll find out are mandated by the city. And so there are a lot of them are what we call housekeeping items, and that's what you'll find. So because this is being offered online through Microsoft Teams and being recorded, we're asking you to speak clearly, talk loudly, and be mindful of interrupting one another. If you are remote and you need technical assistance, we have some team members over on the line as well. Call this number, and you will get somebody from our team that's here. This isn't formal, not formal, so stop us, ask questions. All the team is available to answer questions. So really quick, I wanted to introduce folks that are here, because a lot of the times you see the final product, you come to see all the team members that are on staff that are doing things day-to-day. So for all the UDO projects, and the lead was Justin correctly. And he's here. And Justin oversees the planning in Northwest, and facilitates a lot of different special projects for us. Helen Bunce, the zoning administrator, has also taken up. Mark Pajers, Pajers is here. And he's actually a planner, and you know him probably best because he facilitates a lot of the different kind of projects that you see. Connie is here as well. And she's also the ham officer, so she issues camera permits as well. As well as we have somebody from community enforcement, James Smith, this guy that's here. Some of the amendments you'll find are related to enforcement and needs that they have. So if you have any questions for her, she's here. And last but not least, Miranda Garner, who's in the back. Monica, we have her online, and she'll be the one that somebody called up and her will get. She processes a lot of our permits, positions, and some signs, things like that. So from there, we'll...
I am Bridget Laura, the county stormwater engineer slash administrator. They've asked me to put together a little presentation just to kind of give you the history and the background on county stormwater. And also, the presentation's going to cover a lot of state stormwater too, because if you're not aware, most development in the county has to get a county stormwater permit and a state stormwater permit. So I'll kind of describe the differences in what we require. The state's role as stormwater manager, they have statutory authority to manage the state's water resources, to maintain, protect, and enhance water quality. They do not have statutory authority to regulate or remedy flooding issues. So that's the big distinction between the two. State's stormwater rules began back in 1988. They've been around a lot longer than the county's stormwater requirements. And they've been revised multiple times. They apply in all coastal counties. If you basically disturb over an acre, you have to get a sediment erosion control permit, or you have to get kind of a major permit. Automated, they have to get a state stormwater permit at that time. And in 2008, they actually decreased the square footage so that any commercial development that's 10,000 square feet or more than the permit is, has to get a stormwater permit now too. And when we do our review, if the state sediment erosion control permit or a stormwater permit is required, we will not issue our permit until those are in hand to make sure that they get all the necessary state and federal permits that they need. Our ordinance went into effect in 2002, so it's been almost 20 years. So the purpose and intent at that time is ensure the health and safety, and general welfare assistance, and protect and enhance the water quality of water forces and water bodies by reducing pollutants and water discharges. Our ordinance establishes minimum criteria to control and minimize the quantitative and qualitative impact of stormwater. And we of course encourage sustainable and water impact developments, and ensure compliance with all other applicable regulations. County stormwater ordinance applies in the planning jurisdictional limits of the county. So we don't have stormwater in municipalities or in ETJs unless we have an agreement, which we do have five agreements with Belleville, Woolley Spring Lakes, Bolivia, St. James, and Sunset Beach. As far as the county is concerned, any non-residential development has to have a stormwater permit. And if they fill more than 10,000 square feet, then that pushes them to have to have a state stormwater permit as well. And like I said, the state is looking at water quality concerns, and our ordinance basically requires control of the runoff to pre-developing conditions so that we're not decreasing the flooding. Any activity, like, so if it's residential, if it's over an acre, and it's not a single family lot, then a stormwater permit is required. We do have regulations on individual lots. If they're going to build or change the elevation by more than four inches, then we require a residential stormwater permit for that site. And they basically have to provide a plan to us to show how they're going to manage the runoff so that they're not increasing the flooding on neighboring properties, and they're controlling the runoff onsite or discharging into the existing stormwater system. And the only caveat to that is if the fill is there due to an onsite septic system, they are exempt from stormwater. We also have our 30-foot riparian buffer. There's certain things that are allowed and not allowed to be built in the 30-foot riparian buffer. And, you know, that part, if they want to do development in that buffer, they have to get a stormwater permit from us. Volunty farm's, forest land, and harvesting timber, and mining operations with permits do not, are exempt from stormwater. So like I said, the state looks at water quality, we look at water quantity. So they basically have to control the runoff for the one, 10-year, 24-hour storms to pre-developed conditions. So that's basically 3.7 inches to seven inches of rain in a 24-hour period. And then some issues we have in certain areas, we do sometimes require, before asked if that project's the odor designs, you know, to handle higher flood events, such as 25-year storm, even up to the 100-year storm on occasion. Most of the time, 100-year larger storms are discharged through the stormwater control system via emergency spillways and things like that. So the stormwater control measures, which, you know, ponds, wetlands, infiltration bases, sand filters, bio-tension, there's lots of different options out there. They're designed to remove pollutants from stormwater runoff, reduce them downstream erosion, and provide flood control and promote groundwater recharge. We actually, for any SBN that is approved through the county, we do annual inspections on them every year to make sure that they are maintained properly. And, you know, if they're not being maintained, that gives us a chance to go, and, you know, we send a letter and inspection report. We have pretty good feedback with that. I mean, I think most people, once they get the letter, they, you know, a lot of those you do more maintenance, like mowing and stuff like that, that they're not getting done. This is just sort of a little chart to show, you know, sort of the state and county stormwater projects, their low density, their high density. And this changed over the years with the state. In non-state waters, it used to be 30%, and it went down to 24% in 2008. For state waters, they went from 25% to 12%, and the county's always been 15%. So basically, if your project is over 15% purpose, it's considered high density, and you have to have some sort of stormwater control measures in place.
The same means?
It's a shell fishing, it drains itself of shell fishing waters. So, and you see the setbacks are about the same, 30 or 50 deep. And here's, and the difference between the water quantity is, is you can see in the runoff, they required a runoff from the one-inch storm, then they went to the one-and-a-half inch. Then they bumped it up to the one-year 24-hour, which, like I said, is 3.7 inches. And we've always been at the one-year, 10-year, so up to the seven inches. So, I mean, maybe down the road, that might change. You might have to decide to increase that. I believe New Hampshire County base control up to 25-year storms, so. As far as drainage, the ordinance requires individual property owners to maintain all streams, creeks, ditches, wells, pipes, culverts, et cetera, that are located on their private property. The county does not provide maintenance and drainage ways on private property. This is a wall should not alter and impede the natural flow of these, and drainage units must be maintained and free of destruction. And anything, any ditches and DOD right-of-way are the responsibility of the DOT. And the last aspect to our ordinance that we don't, probably don't hear much about, is the illegal discharge program. So, you know, we do look at and monitor, mostly on a complaint basis, if someone is discharging illegal discharge into the stormwater system. And then, so this is the list of basically things that are not considered illegal discharges. So anything that's not on this list, we find or notify that's being dumped, we will send a letter and tell them to cease and desist. And, you know, we haven't really had to do that a lot, but we do have it in our ordinance that we can find people and, you know, further make them, you know, repair it if they damaged downstream, you know, stormwater. And that was pretty much it, unless you have any questions.
Questions? Thank you. Appreciate it. Oh, the other one. Oh, the introduction.
Okay. So now we step into the UDO requirements. And first, may I share the timeline? We have a deadline, deadline. So in the spring, actually till the last year, so we have been collecting suggestions. We'll see the customers when they come in, we have a field list, we have staff review them. And then we come and bring it to you for discussion. So fall, summer, we did all our review and discussions. Most of them go remotely. Then now is your turn to review it. Mark's able to tie concern, maybe you can give the commissioners time frame, and then we hope that the changes were made by the leaders of this year to comply with state's.
Do we approve those, or the commissioner approves them?
You'll approve them, and then I'll go to the commissioner.
Who?
You'll do the recommendation, and then it'll go to the commissioner. I'm sorry. So why did we do this? Well, there's lots of reasons why. The first one is to comply with the general sections, and in this case, chapter 160D. And we will learn a lot about 160D tonight. But the second way is to make Brunswick County better. We have customers in our office that make suggestions all the time. They will add that to the list, or if it's something we're seeing not working. We update and respond to existing conditions, obviously, the world changes. The last time we did require us, we added tagging home definitions because it was totally popular to tag homes. So, you know, things in response to what's going on, as well as corrections. Changes, changes in code names, you know, a lot of them are housekeeping related, and you will find. Our UDO does have guiding principles, and I will go along with you. The first one is the quality of life, a better place for tomorrow goal. And that relates to transportation, as far as agriculture, operations, historic resources, fresh food, natural trees and vegetation, water quality, recreation, open space and amenities, and affordable living. So you'll see a lot of those elements within the UDO. Okay. The second county principle is economic, is economic development driven. Tourism, jobs, being business friendly, even our freest are business friendly and resident friendly. Change of uses, the fees are actually reduced because a lot of those are existing businesses and existing structures that need to have businesses. It's that the average is to begin with. Mixed use, fine development, subdivision, connectivity, retail, and infrastructure. So that's just some of those things are captured here.
Yep, sorry. I'll just do it. This one's being finicky.
Try to close up all the PowerPoints, and then open them back up. We may have stuffed it at first slide there that was up, and then registered the next one.
Yeah, I think that's probably what it is. Okay.
Technology.
Yeah.
And we probably have 20 virtual rooms a week, almost, so. I've had three today. But not everything wants to work right all the time.
Does your clicker work now?
There we are. It should work now.
The next, the last one is to be flexible. And why do we want to be flexible in the UDO? Because we want to encourage and allow a second line. We don't want all the developments to look the same. We want to receive better plans, because better plans will be better development and be better for the future. And we want them to be livable communities, and promote high-quality development, promote natural resource conservation, and to accommodate various needs of various projects. We're a large county. Obviously, what might be needed in the area is not much, we needed in Southport or Ocean Isle Beach. So we have to be flexible. And there's lots of flexibility wrapped into the UDO. We define the development process as well as some of our administrative adjustments. So here are just some examples of flexibility that is built into the ordinance for new setbacks, narrow buffers interior to the site. The site design alternatives, increased density, minimum administrative adjustments, mixed-use necessary units. Those are just some of the options that we have. So now that we've had the overview, we'll go ahead and get started. And I'm going to hand this over to Justin. We're going to start with the 160D, which runs the state mandated amendments.
Hello, everyone. How are you? Good. How is everyone? Is everyone doing well? So we're here tonight to talk about chapter 160D. So historically, the laws governing planning and development regulations have been looked at in two separate sections of the North Carolina statutes. 153A deals with counties, and then 168 deals with municipalities. The state has realized that these sections are far more similar than they are different, so they've decided to combine the two to be better organized and clear for people, you know, abiding by those rules and regulations. So the new chapter 160D of the North Carolina general statutes consolidates current city and county legislation statutes for development regulations. This consolidates it into a single unified chapter. It's more logical and coherent in its organization. These are not major policy changes or shifts in the scope of authority granted to local governments. It clarifies amendments and consensus reforms that will need to be incorporated into local development regulations. This affects all city and county zoning, subdivision, and other development regulations, including unified development ordinances, and all will need to conform to the new law. So chapter 160D is effective now. The local government's have until July 1st, 2021, to adopt these regulation changes. So first off, all of the old references need to be changed. So all the references to 153A need to be updated to 160D in the appropriate locations. So we're proposing to change all of the references to meet the current regulations. And again, so I'm going to kind of, kind of go through these, not too quickly. If you're pretty stopped, maybe y'all have any questions. These are pretty straightforward. You know, I want to be clear that these are things that the state is requiring us to reflect in our ordinance. So special needs permanent. Historically, special needs permits have been referred to as conditional needs permits. There's some confusion between conditional needs permit and conditional needs avenue. So the state has established that, you know, everyone needs to be using consistent language. So we're going to remove all old references to the special exception permit process, and change it to special needs permit. Conflicts of interest. There's another, another proposed amendment to add a conflicts of interest section in section 2.1, article 2, which is decision-making and administrative bodies of the UDO. The proposed amendment addresses governing board, appointed board, administrative staff, caution judicial decisions, and then clarifies resolution of objection, and clarifies familial relationship as far as conflicts of interest. Oath of office. So the state of North Carolina general statutes require specific oath of office languages, or language for elected and appointed board members. The Brunswick County board commissioners, their oath of office language is consistent with these statutes. So there will be some slight changes to the planning board oath of office, but nothing significant. And if you can see the state there, feel free to look over that if you're interested. And we'll also be sure to update the bylaws as well where appropriate. So chapter 160D generally requires that definitions used within unified development ordinance are consistent with state definitions. So these are just a few examples of definitions that were going to be taken from the state and be incorporated into our ordinance for that consistency, including building, dwelling, dwelling unit, and sleeping unit definitions. Additional definitions may be identified, but they'll be brought to you when this comes formally to the board. Enforcement procedures. Notice of violation. So one of the changes clarifies the recipients of a notice of violation. 160D clarifies that notices of violation shall be issued to both the landowner and the violator if they are different. This also clarifies that the zoning administrator must certify that the notice was provided. So just to explain that a little bit, you know, if the violator is a leasing of the property, we can't issue that notice to them, but it has to also go to the property owner. Permanent revocation. So chapter 160D provides that permanent revocation must follow the same process as the original approval. The county shall follow the same development review and approval process required for issuance of the development approval, including any required notice or hearing in the review and approval of any revocation of that approval. If the project is administratively approved, it can be administered with your vote. If the project is part of board approval, such as a special needs permit, then it will need to go back to the board to be revoked through that process. There also need notice requirements, a hearing requirement, et cetera. Written consent for a special needs permit. We must obtain the applicant or landowner's written consent to conditions related to a special needs permit to ensure enforceability. Verbal consent to the conditions associated with the special needs permit must be agreed to by the applicant at the meeting, once the board discusses and decides on the case. Written consent is required from the applicant following the meeting as part of the draft special needs permit that is sent to the applicant, once the special needs permit is approved. Public notice requirement. Public notices, one of the things they clarify is that public notices shall include properties separated by transportation board, such as, you know, Highway 17, 74, 76, that sort of thing. This has typically been the practice of staff, so we just add in language accordance to reflect that. Development approval applications. Chapter 160D clarifies who can apply for a development permit. Proposal to add language to section 3.1.1. Development permit required to clarify that the following parties can apply for a development permit. And this includes the landowner, a leasing or person holding an option or contract to purchase or lease the land, or an authorized agent of the land. Voting legislative decision clarification. So chapter 160D clarifies that a legislative decision for a development regulation may be adopted after the first reading by a simple majority. This includes text amendments and ordinance adoptions. This item does not need to be reflected in the UDO, but needs to be made aware to the legislative board members and staff. Historically, things, certain items like unified development ordinance would have to go through several readings. Two or three, I believe, but they simplified that rule. So if there's a simple majority, then it's approved. So development approval in writing. Chapter 160D clarifies that the county must provide development approvals in writing. This may be provided in print or electronic form. The provided in electronic form then must be protected from further editing. Proposal to add language to section 3.1.1. Development permit required to clarify this requirement. And this is a way the state is ensuring that, you know, the projects have legitimate approvals, documentation associated with that approval. If there's any question, move forward.
And this would be one area that Sack has had to spend a lot of time with our MIs department on, because if we really weren't doing that exactly, that we were approving projects through our permitting system, but we were just hitting it first, it wasn't like that document that came out from the person that had. So this will be one of the changes that we're making.
And one thing, just to go off of that, one thing we're working on with our system is having these approval documents being generated automatically, so it saves time for staff on the back end. All development approvals run with the land. So unless provided otherwise by law, all rights, privileges, benefits, burdens, and obligations created by development approvals may pursuant to chapter 160D be attached and vermined. So if someone sells the property, the rights of previous approvals will go with the property and not with them. Just to verify that. Now I'm going to turn this over to Mark to talk about some of the changes to the reselling process.
Some of these are just a little bit of housekeeping of these first statements, such as, update the UDO to reflect consistency statement requirements consistent with general statutes and current practices for reselling and text amendments. So making sure that those respond to these statement sheets that you guys get to fill out after each action of reselling or text amendment. Just make sure that those are compliant with the UDO and vice versa. Clarified procedure for reselling decisions by the planning board and reselling appeal decisions by the board commissioners. As you know, we got the statute, or the legislation changed. So the planning board is the authority for resellings, unless it's a appeal. So there's some areas... So there's some areas in the UDO that we'll need to make some, just some housekeeping changes. Update rezoning section to better differentiate between conventional rezoning and conditional rezoning. Right now, the conditional rezoning section is very small, and we want to maybe make it a little bit more clear of what it is. And also leading into the next section where we want to clarify and reorganize the rezoning section to make it conditional zoning, not just an overlay district, because the problem we're running into with overlays is we have to assign a base district. So if you'll recall, maybe a year and a half ago, we had a gentleman on Midway Road who wanted to rezone to, he wanted to build a personal storage structure. And it was R 7500, right down Midway, and he couldn't do that in the R 7500, so he had to, we had to assign a zone. Even though he doesn't want to do anything else, just that one storage structure, we had to pick a zone that allows it, which is RR. So we did it to RR CZ. Problem with assigning that RR is that it makes everybody in the area, it doesn't like the RR history. You know, they get upset, and even though it's only that one use, it's allowed in RR, that a lot of times it just causes confusion and panic, and everybody thinks that once you get some RR, then everybody's going to come in and rezonate. They're going to hit their button, the door, and that's a snowball effect. So what we would like to do is not, not to assign a unique base district, just call it a CZ. It's a conditional zoning, and then you list the specific uses, so by not making it an overlay, making it actual rezoning, I think will, will help that and cause less confusion. Then we've got the third-party downzoning. This is just to be compliant with statutes. Anytime you're going to downzone, so say go from R 7500 to RR for a specific criteria that the state requires. So by decreasing density to allow, to allow less development than previously allowed, that is a definition of third-party downzone, or of downzoning. There is no, basically this eliminates that third party. So every single person that owns a property that is involved in the downzoning has to sign the application, and that's the requirement. That's not currently specified in the UDO, so if you comply, we'll have that language. We already do that to comply, just in practice, but we just want to make sure it's, it's crystal clear. Any questions on that?
And just to add to that, the only time a third-party downzoning would be allowed would be if it was initiated by the county itself for mass rezoning and that sort of thing.
And so the county could add a parcel. Like I had a situation some years ago where we had a family, and one of their family members was disabled, and not moving out. And they wanted the whole, they needed the whole, their whole family subdivision rezoned for setback reasons. They didn't comply with setbacks, and they were trying to update some of the buildings and stuff that were out there. And so they went through the rezoning process, but their, their one relative couldn't sign. They weren't of equal to. And so Sack ended up having, because they knew it just makes sense, and the structure, and so we consulted with that.
And so next is vested rights. So Chapter 160B requires the term site-specific development plan to be changed to site-specific vesting plan, which is the way it's currently used in the ordinance. So that just clarifies that these are the projects that was, had vested rights. Currently, the UDO defines the term site-specific, despite site-specific development plan speaking, but it is not comprehensive. So it doesn't include all the appropriate types of projects. That proposes updating the definition to better define what constitutes a site-specific, site-specific vesting plan, and further clarify the vesting periods that apply to different project types. The following vested rights period, periods are clarified in the 160B update. So building permits, those are valid for a period of six months. Development approval, which is your normal home, will be valid for 12 months. Site-specific plans, such as commercial site plans, are valid two to five years. But we have the power to pick, you know, what the specific year would be. So we typically do three years for vested rights. So we'll be consistent with moving forward with that. So one of the new things, clarifications, is vested rights for multi-phase development. So they're vested for a period of seven years if they're over 25 acres. So that'll apply to a lot of the major subdivisions and planned developments, and give them a little bit more breathing room with, with those larger projects. Are there any questions about, about this section? And then some additional housekeeping items. We're going to be updating references to the flood damage original ordinance, which is housed in the UDO. These are minor reference changes. And then one thing we're working on now, among staff and working with other departments, is to better address the fire code approvals within the UDO. And this is related to 160B along the lines of the development approval in writing. The other departments are having a look at this and make sure that they're issuing, you know, permits and approvals as being appropriate by the state. And so we're going to be reviewing the roles and responsibilities of the different departments. In Section 2 of the ordinance, it talks about, you know, the planning board, staff, board adjustment, zoning administrator, everyone's roles and responsibilities. We're taking a closer look at that to better define what the fire role is with these development approvals. This is currently under review. Hopefully, we'll have this kind of shaped up prior to the next meeting. And that concludes the 160B. Are there any questions about the 160B at this time?
Are you going to start it?
Yeah. So this is, this is the section where we encourage more conversation, more questions. Feel free to voice your concerns throughout. These are proposed amendments by staff. So these aren't state requirements. This is just things that we feel need to be done to the ordinance to better improve it and improve the overall quality of development in the county. Someone's sitting in the shade today because someone planted a tree a long time ago. Mr. Warren Buffett said that, and I thought that really spoke volumes as far as what we're here to do. So the first thing is the setback certification requirement, which you all may be familiar with. So a foundation survey is required for residential structures that are located within 50 feet from any property line. This requirement is intended to identify errors of placement of structures before the project is too far along. However, this requirement can be burdensome on some property owners. There's a proposal amongst staff to amend the UDO, first of all, to better clarify which projects are exempt, such as swimming pools, generators, HVAC units, et cetera, which need to have that reflected in the, in the ordinance. So one thing that staff is proposing as far as a change to the requirement. Staff is proposing an amendment that exempts any residential accessory structure that is located more than 50 feet from the front property line and more than 15 feet from any rear or side property line. So the intention there, just to better explain, accessory structures have a minimum setback of five feet. And sometimes these accessory structures can be those, you know, 10 by 10 sheds you buy. And it can be burdensome as far as cost. So what we're doing is kind of loosening that requirement for those smaller structures. Because if the site plan shows it's 15 feet, there's not a lot of concern that it's closer than five. But that's kind of the intention there. Are there any thoughts or concerns, questions?
In some cases, the cost of the survey is almost the cost of the structure. It's the complaint.
So now it's at five feet, that'd be 15 on the sides on the back.
Right, we wouldn't allow, we wouldn't require them to provide one if they were going to propose to be located more than 15 feet from property line in the side or rear, or in particular.
We require a setback certification or a survey.
Right, setback certification. Or a survey, exactly.
Yeah, and one thing that the proposed change do, it clarifies that requirement. So people can submit a foundation survey, which is a signed sealed survey, or a setback certification letter, which is also signed and sealed, but it's more of a description that this project meets all the requirements of the zoning district. Any questions? So microbreweries, distilleries, and wineries. So this is a growing trend in the region. It's a growing trend across the state. I'm sure it's a growing trend across the nation. You know, if you notice more urbanized areas, you'll start to see more of the microbreweries, even micro distilleries and wineries. We don't see so many wineries around here because it's not really wine country, but there are some throughout the county. So we have a proposal to amend the UDO to allow distilleries, wineries, and the associated micros consistent with breweries and microbreweries as currently provided in the ordinance. So we're suggesting to amend the brewery definition to remove language that references gallons and simply refer to barrels. So barrels are defined by the state, so, you know, they'll just need to look up, you know, the state definition of that. Because the state changes their definition, so we can just refer to it as barrels. And also add definitions for barrel, distillery, micro distillery, winery, and micro winery. So distilleries produce more than 50,000 gallons of spears per year. Wineries produce more than 50,000 gallons of wine per year. So we're making those consistent with that. So if it's less than 50,000 gallons a year, would be considered a micro winery or micro distillery.
So what gets changed to barrels there?
Excuse me?
What, what did you say? What changed to barrels instead of gallons?
Yeah, so there's an outdated reference. The gallons in the current definition is incorrect, but the reference to barrels is correct. So we're just making it consistent with that, so there's less confusion for people trying to develop these types of businesses. And then to continue this, so we want to provide that micro distilleries and micro wineries would be allowed by right in CLD, NC, CI, IG, and REI zoning districts, consistent with microbreweries. And then proposal to add micro brewery, micro distillery, and micro winery as a use allowed by special use permit in the RR and MR 3200 district. This is consistent with, with bars and that clubs, that, that sort of thing, as far as the approval goes. And then also add distillery and winery as permitted uses in the CI and IG districts, consistent breweries. Because these are the larger scale operations that typically, you know, should go in more industrial areas. And then also add parking requirements for breweries, et cetera, as follows. So one per 100 square foot taproom and one per 500 square foot production area. And these parking standards, you know, we don't currently have them in the ordinance, but this is consistent with other jurisdictions. Are there any questions about breweries, distilleries, and wineries? And then I'll turn it over to Ken Buck.
First thing I want to talk about is our return, travel, travel storage. This is probably something that we, one of the things that we hear the most about in our office. First amendment is to clarify storage allowed, the use of RVs and campers on residential developed property. And this is a change that would take with those, that we need to enforce on. Basically, what we're looking at is clarifying that it would be unlawful to park or otherwise store anything for any purpose, any recreational vehicle, or travel trailer within any zoning district except as files. And, and what we're talking about here are, are things that we're already doing, is just making a little clearer within the drive, within the crude location of an RV, parker, campground. In other words, clarifying camping and RV trailers and travel trailers are to go away from the campgrounds, not on residential property, not in residential neighborhoods. Within the driveway, the side, the rear yard, garage, and carport of a parcel with a permitted residential structure for the purposes of storage between recreational trips alone. In other words, if it's a vacant piece of property, that's not a place to store your camper or your RV, that you can't store at your residence. If there's a residence there in the side, side yards or rear yards or garage and carport. Again, trying to get clutter out of front yards for that. And no recreational vehicle, travel trailer shall be used for the purposes of storing materials. It's amazing how many people across the county want to do that, to use some of these RVs or the travel trailers for storage. Well, they weren't built for storage. And it, because it can become a projectile hurricane, certainly, because it's certainly not a tidal dam. And it's just, it's, that's not what they were built for, and we'd like to, to look at that as a part of trying to, to clean things up a little bit more.
We get a lot of complaints about trailers and campers. We've taken several of them to court and have won. And had electors remove some of the properties over them because of complaints in the neighborhood of people continuously breaking their campers or RVs and just setting it on vacant lots. This is a big issue that enforcement sees on a daily basis.
If you own the vacant lot, you can't put your, your private camper, your private vacant lot?
No.
You cannot stay in it either, because it doesn't need building code, building code doesn't allow you to stay in it.
I'm not talking about staying in it, I'm talking about storing.
The, in the storage, you know, you cannot.
So I can't go buy a lot and then go buy a camper and store my camper on my lot?
Correct.
Not without your home being.
Not without a house.
If your home's there, then yes, you could. But if you just want to store it, that's a completely different use. That's storage of, of a, of a vehicle, of like a storage of a vehicle. So it's a completely different use as opposed to a situation where you could store it between your trips, between your camping trips at your home. If you don't want to roll down, it's time to change it.
I'm not the key on that. That's why I don't live where there's HOA. Just because I want to store what I want to store on my property, when I want to store it.
And that's why we have that enforcement.
And that's why I don't live where there's HOA. I mean, I live on 6th acre property. And there's three different parcels there. And if I decide I want to store my camper on one of my other parcels, then that's where I'm going to store my camper. And yes.
Most of the complaints we get are on like 6,000 square foot lot near the beaches. And the, they're right there, and the person walks out, and that's all their next door camper. So that's usually the situation. Kim might have some more information on what she's seen regularly in the field as far as people complaining about camps.
Yeah, basically. There's campers all over this county, and yeah, they can play some of them. People swabbing or a lot of people want to do what you do, or you want to do. And we tell them, you can, you have a house on this lot. If you do instrument combination and combine the lots together, then you can store it over all what used to be the other lot, because now you have one big lot.
So what's the difference in where a camper sit? A camper doesn't move. I don't agree with this at all. The camper, the camper wouldn't move. It would just be combining the two problems, but the camper wouldn't have to move. That makes no sense to me.
But I think if you look at the different circumstances, that if we were to allow it strictly for that circumstance, we're also then allowing it for the other circumstance where it is a lot that is smaller within some of these smaller neighborhoods.
But if you reverse that, if you disallow it in that circumstance, then you also disallow in my circumstances, which makes absolutely no sense. So maybe we need to look at that when we're retiring that a little later.
I mean, I think I understand what it is you want to do there. Maybe there's something that can be done with that, I don't know. But it is, it is a problem. And I live where there's HOA, and it's a problem in there because people will do that. Our, our rules can be giffed on whatever. As you enable, your, your friend will come down and park their 35-foot RV in the driveway and leave it there for two weeks while they're visiting you, and that's, we've all upset.
And there's the temptation to sleep in a lot of their, you know, lot was there in the driveway too.
Some people do that too.
And they are, they're non-constructive. And they are, they're non-constructive about that.
My camper's not constructed and sleeping?
Not without being preferably timed out.
The building laws require them to be connected to services, so that's why we cannot, we cannot invoke that. That's not allowed.
They don't have electric service.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not, they're not, with that as a permit though. They're not accessible as a permit or a, or a state.
Right.
I was trying to do is deter people. We get calls almost every day about, hey, can I, I got a camper, I got an empty lot, can I stay in on weekends? We're trying to deter people from doing that sort of thing. Because people, as we've seen all over the county, people leave their campers, they go back down, they never come back. It deteriorates and then it impacts the property values around it and the property system. So that's kind of the intention here is to...
And when people are saying a camper that outside a lot more, so they're locked a little easier than the normal home as well. We get complaints about those levels. It seems like there would be a complaint and it would be already allowed.
Well, so there's, so there's really two options to solve this. One is for him to consolidate his piece of property. So he's got a house on one piece of property. But the other one is to put some language in there that says that you can't do that. You can't store it on another piece of property unless it's contiguous with a piece of, another piece of property you own that doesn't.
In ownership, yeah. It's contiguous ownership more than one parcel.
Or you could allow it. Or you could allow it, or you could set it in a lot size. I mean, there's nothing wrong with people calling and complaining and telling them to allow it.
That's true.
If in the case that they don't allow it.
To deter what he's talking about.
To what?
Little size idea. That is, at least for the best of me, because that would deter what you're talking about, but have no effect.
Well, if you, if you have more than one parcel in contiguous ownership and you, your house is here, you know, you want to put your RV in a covered area on the third one down, but you own all of it.
Nobody could.
All's any problem.
I do just want to, I do just want to say this though, when you, if we were to go that route, you just have to think about some of the circumstances where once you have someone saying that they're going to store a camper on a lot, especially being a vacation area, we're living ourselves susceptible to where they're, they are going to come down on the weekends or end up staying in that camper. It is highly unlikely they're going to store it on that lot, come down here, move that camper to a campground when they have a, a lot that, a vacant lot that they own. We get a call twice a week where they want to buy a lot so that they can store camper and stay in it on the weekends. So to allow the storage, I can tell you that we are probably also then going to have calls about people also staying in these campers. So just keep that in mind.
So I mean, what's, that's probably a good question.
That just, yeah, that makes the adding for the.
Well, I mean, that's kind of the job.
And this is one that you would like us to look at more, that's what you're saying.
Yeah, simply to find a language solution to that.
And the problem, and I will say just tack, tack on this and I'll let Kim speak to this more, but looking at enforcement, it's a lot harder. Once we allow it to be stored on there, trying to find evidence of them staying in that camper is nearly impossible. So it just, all they have to do is go and unplug it from whatever they're doing. And then they're going out there over and over again from a complaint they're having from a neighbor. And it's never going to end because all they have to do is disconnect it and now it's just storage. Hook it back up and now they're staying in it. So it is, it is as easily as unplugging to saying that it's stored to be stayed.
Well, what's easy is camera, film it, you know, the neighbor calls in, I've got.
It should be easy to tell whether it's hooked up to, to either city water or, or, or county water or a well. Because that's visible on sight. It should be easy to see that they have electrical service to it, whether you unplug it or not. So that should be relatively easy.
But you can't hook it to a 110. I mean, you have to have a proper electrical service and how these people.
It's difficult to put a T-pole out there. That's what we usually see. Right, exactly.
And that's the electrical. Just don't give the permit.
Yeah, it gets meter running, so.
Right. We already get calls now where people say that they want a T-pole for irrigation services when there's no irrigation on the lot whatsoever. So they get a T-pole out there and then they hook up the.
Then why do you issue the T-pole?
They, they claim. They claim it's for irrigation purposes. We can't deny them service for irrigation.
I mean, you're denying somebody electrical service. I mean, it's kind of like the storage. Why should you be? I understand. I've done this. I've been an inspector. I've been, you know, back in the day. But if you're gonna, you can regulate who gets a T-pole. If, if they're going to get an irrigation service, then put the well in first and then go see the well and say, okay, now I can give you a T-pole. But don't just give them the T-pole for well service that they're never going to put in.
Probably won't put it in because they don't, they don't attach their.
And they can hook it up to the campers.
To the well and to the, and to the well. For the well.
With the T-pole. Why are they going to irrigate on the vacant lot?
Clearly, this is a big issue and.
Oh, yeah.
It is, it is an issue that, that we deal with on a daily basis. And.
Well, we'll look at different options.
Just one question. How do y'all feel about the language that just guides property owners to store them on a residential lot as far as the side of the rear yard? Is that something that, is that a piece of that that's acceptable and we can look at the vacant lots?
You're talking about your wordage as to on the driveway?
Yeah, so one of the reasons we did this was to guide property owners in where they can store their RVs or travel trailers. So we're suggesting if there's a house on the lot, to keep it out of the front yard, you know, have it either the driveway, the side yard, or the rear yard.
Do you allow detached accessory buildings in the front yard or are they limited?
Um, technically, no.
Only in the RR district does it allow it in front of the front.
Okay, so everything else has to be even with the plane and the, I mean, you know, the.
Right.
Behind the front side of the structure.
Which I mean, if that's how you do that, then I kind of think this ought to be kind of the same way.
Can you look at a, can you look at, you got a lot size on that too? Because obviously, if you've got, if you've got a house or an RV that's a big RV and you've got a lot, you know, you've got people building 10 feet from the property line.
It's got to be weird to forget.
So then it would have to be where it is.
Or maybe we say, if you're, if you're really on that small piece of property, maybe you need to find someplace else to put this. Whether that, if it's up, if it's up next to, oops.
Your favorite storage, what people do.
Yeah.
If you, if you don't really have enough space to store it, I'm, I guess my question is, what is not enough space to store? If you have a 6,000 square foot lot, do you have enough, do you have enough room to store it without being obtrusive to your neighbors and whatever else?
Well, these, this storage covers or whatever you want to call them, carport, like they may be talking about storing it, would have to make side yard setbacks and things. So that's not going to be somewhat if you already built out.
There's a requirement for one of those, isn't there?
And that's, and now you're getting into, we don't allow accessory structures on vacant lots unless there is a primary structure in residential zoning districts. So then you're opening that.
Except for RR.
Okay. So without combining, doing a instrument of combination.
With the primary.
So then you're, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, which is, yeah. I mean, and that's the way it's been forever when I was in the county.
So do you have to have it in a structure or can you just drive it up to say you got, you have five acres out in the country? Can you just drive it up beside your house and park it?
You have to have a structure.
Yeah, you can park it there.
I don't know the problem if there's plenty of land, but if there's very little land, you park it right up there. Why didn't you? That would, that would be a concern. There really isn't enough space to put it. Is there, there would be a side yard setback on something like that if you were going to park that there?
If there's, if there's a structure, if there, you're putting in a carport, there is a setback. Parking, I don't really think, because it's not a permanent structure. You do, we do allow vehicles to be parked in setbacks as long as it's not in the front.
Right. With, with driveway, all we can basically look at is, is making sure that individuals aren't approaching on their neighbor's yard, you know, that affect their car or when they get out, you know, just as a courtesy thing. You, you want to set your driveway and set your van that when you get out of the car, still on your property, not your.
Is there a maximum driveway width? Just kind of have maximum width of the driveway, like some of the.
No, we have a very big space for parks. And you checked it on our permit tab, a little over a year ago, we added that to the, because people were skipping on them. They were doing eight by 17, it's been a nine by 18.
But a max.
No, the only thing would be, it would be impervious.
Impervious surface might roll it out, but otherwise you could be, go wide or, you know, it would be that.
You've heard a concern, you can help.
Yeah, I did. I don't worry.
Put some good thought to it.
We'll come back to it.
Vehicle repair location. Currently, up to two vehicles may be repaired. It's not a residential property. If the vehicles are registered to the occupant of the residence, vehicle repair and storage may not be conducted and require a front yard. Plus then what would require that the vehicle repair would not be conducted in the front yard of the property. The amendment asks for clarity of enforcement and reduces repair vehicles in the front yard and directs them to side yard lots.
Now, we have recently approved on Ocean Isle Beach Road Development Affairs. The houses are very close together and there are two parking places, front to back for each house and that's all there is.
That's what's required.
So.
Yeah, that's what's required.
Two block of car.
So where would, where would somebody who has a house like that repair its car?
This section is typically used for someone changing their brakes, changing their tire. This is used to address the junk cars. People say, I'm going to have project cars later and have not. If I'm going to change my brakes, change my tires, I'm doing it from the driveway in the front yard. If I get an inability, I'll already be done by the time I get it. It's correct.
We had a situation a year or so ago with a gentleman that was running a car repair place from his house. He had between two proper rooms, he had like 20, 30 cars between two proper rooms. He was repairing. He said it was a hobby. So I mean, do you see what that's?
Reminds me of Mr. Green on the 904 where he's got, he's got a pile of about 10,000 golf clubs. He's got 40 long.
He did, man. Man run over his old man.
Yeah, he ran over him. He, he was out in his front yard with drunk guys, missed the road, ran over his front. Done some business with this dude. That's, that's the kind, I mean, he, he essentially has a junkyard in a residential, residential, but probably right along 904. The front half of that is his own commercial.
Yeah, a lot of it on 904.
And then the house is on the, might be on the back.
Any additional questions concerned with regard to vehicle repair locations? Moving right along here, junk vehicles and junk yard definition. Section 5.4.5 junk vehicles provides that junk vehicles may be allowed in performance within abandoned and junk motor vehicle ordinance, which is an outdated reference. It's corrects the reference from abandoned and junk motor vehicle ordinance to Roswell County solid waste ordinance.
I'm not sure what we're doing there. Let me see.
It's just simply a slight change in.
It's permanent ordinance we don't have. I don't know if we ever had it, but we don't have it now. I've never seen it. I don't know.
So this corrects the ordinance?
We've been saying this about the ordinance for a while and we don't even know what it is.
But this corrects the ord, corrects the ordinance.
It's a housekeeping issue.
To do what?
Um, to refer to, um.
Proper documents.
The proper documents, yeah.
Okay.
Instead of the outdated ordinance we don't have.
Now looking at the junk vehicles and junk yard definition. This would be a proposal to amend junk yard definition to include the presence of more than two junk motor vehicles rather than two or more as it currently combined. It seems to be simpler for some people to understand.
Additionally, we need to be consistent with the solid waste ordinance. We have two ordinances, one solid waste, one zoning, and they're not quite consistent with their coverage. And so it'll be very helpful if they're exact same.
So what's, what's the definition of a junk motor vehicle?
It's a, it's not operable.
Well, what's the answer?
It's in, it's inoperable, has missing parts, it is, has a value of less than $100.
Not inspected, not inspected with padding?
Well, okay. It's, it's actually two-fold, not one, it's only has one for it. General statute has abandoned and junk motor vehicles. So we have just taken the junk motor vehicle part, we keep that. It's supposed to be a hand and not a horse or whatever. So, but it's the value of it. Can it be hit and knocked over and hurt a child or something else's property? You know, because it's on lots or something.
Additionally, that it cannot be self-propelled or moved in the manner in which originally intended. But.
But the, the driving, the driving cost. Basically, this has consistency, it corrects the reference, as you said, to the solid waste ordinance and gives a little bit more flexibility for property owners that are working on carrying vehicles. And then it goes towards the enforcement procedure for related violations. Any questions? Park parking table. Heavy and light industrial parking standards only address enclosed floor area and not the outdoor use area. In addition to specific outdoor regressive standards, they should be provided. So basically, the proposal is to add parking standard for outdoor storage in a work area as follows. To the one space for 5,000 square foot outside storage indoor work area. And that's consistent with how the interior space currently. And then add the following new standards for required parking for outdoor residence recreation. Then to golf, it's two spaces per hole, the driving range, one space for stop, that cage, one space for stop, shooting range, one space for stop. These are pretty much consistent with what we see in other surrounding areas. Outdoors, display and storage. Section 6.2.2 provides that outdoors place and storage be permitted in non-residential district. I'll go through the administrative adjustment process in section 9.6. This is something that should be great. It's an incorrect process for outdoors place and storage. The proposal to amend section 6.22.1A to remove this outdated language follows. And that is simply removing the language in total. This would not be, shouldn't be confused with outdoor sales and display other than vehicles and heavy equipment sales or large or small blocks. There is a separate definition for that in that situation where the. But this is just general outdoors sales, outdoors display and storage. Where someone may be, may have a commercial retail sales store and would want to bring some of their products outside from inside to the outside. Updated business license reference. And basically, this is just a housekeeping guideline because counties cannot require this license now. Instead, North Carolina has something that has changed in the last couple of years and we needed to, to take this house ordinance as a housekeeping guideline to reflect the North Carolina statutes. Thank you.
Right. We got home occupations in the section five point four point four. Home occupations, part A provides that no display of goods, products, or services shall be visible all site. It includes that there shall be no external evidence such as commercial vehicles. Part C provides that one commercial vehicle may be allowed. Part F provides that one three square foot sign of commercial quality is permitted. So the proposal is to amend five point four point four A to clarify that one commercial vehicle and one on-prem sign may be allowed. Those are kind of conflicting saying that you cannot have external evidence such as commercial vehicles nor any other external evidence within. Would also say that you can have one commercial vehicle and you can also have a sign which is external evidence. So there's some clarity there to not have it conflicting.
Your proposal doesn't specify any size on the sign.
Three square feet.
Well, that's, that's what's going to replace the proposal is just the piece down below, right?
So it will, we're going to revise the, if I'm not mistaken, Justin, along the red line, we're going to revise it. But it doesn't necessarily say that no external evidence is allowed. We're going to, the part F is going to remain to allow the three square foot sign. But we're going to revise the upper part of that section so that these certain items of external evidence are.
Part C and part F stay at the new proposal, the proposal's the copies.
Right, exactly. Is that right, Justin? I just want to make sure. It is along the red line of all this to make sure it takes that figure out. All right, taking to the home occupations and accessory structures. Section five point four point four D provides that the home occupation may not exceed fifty percent of the area of the gross floor area of the dwelling unit. Prohibits activities associated with the home occupation within a detached garage or other accessory structure. Section five point four point four A provides that there shall be no external evidence of the activities such as outdoor storage, smoke, noise, odors, and other nuisances emitted from the furnace. The plumbing shafts are split on whether to allow accessory structures to be used in this way. Whether the home accessory or the home occupation should be allowed strictly within the dwelling unit itself or say an attached garage, or if it should be allowed also in say, an accessory structure or detached garage per se.
There's, there's no specification in here about any particular zone district either, so.
Not here, we do have, maybe, maybe there's not. It is not that, but I don't believe which, we still have mystery.
So right now, really, you can hold it as being in the main house. But if you have a garage, you could go ahead and guide that wanted to build that. And you wanted to do it in a garage that you built come back for the house. And you tried to do that. But if you use his current garage to build another structure for his storage part. And so that, he was very upset because he could have built something a little bit, and that's for his workhouse, which was partly the new door trap, partly going to be the business of Cameron. And which is one of the reasons why this is being proposed, it's just very upsetting.
So in our seventy-five hundred, you have one?
Yeah, in all done in this, you can only have one.
So he has an attached garage, he can have one structure.
No, you can only have any tier to your house. So for example, if you have a house and you have a garage, you can use your garage, or you can use one of your bedrooms as an office. Yeah, because it's interior to the house.
It's a part of the same primary building footprint.
I think initially they probably did that thinking home office. It's all they were thinking. But that was before a lot of online sales. And a lot of people were coming home doing various different things, whether they're crafty or whatever. So a lot of people need workshops and stuff like that. I think they're doing it anyway. They just ignore us and you, and nobody really knows. So that's why we brought it up, and it's legal.
We also think, and this, these days of post-COVID, a lot more people are going to be working, you know, remotely and from home and things like that.
I simply thought that there's a different side of that. Currently, we do not limit the amount of square footage of accessory structure. And without some type of limitation, you could get into a situation where your accessory structure is larger than your primary structure, which means your business is larger than your home in a residential neighborhood. That's the extreme, but that's a real danger.
Could you get a building bigger than your house on your lot?
No.
But I guess one thing to consider with that is putting aside the use is do you want an accessory structure larger than your primary structure? Because we're just, at, at that point, it just wouldn't make the aesthetics. Because there should not be any external evidence from seeing that. So the fact of whether the building is four hundred square feet or three thousand square feet, it's all interior. So the fact of it being not home occupation or strictly your personal uses where you store your lawnmower is irrelevant. It's really the aesthetics of do you want your accessory structure larger?
I remember there was a guy that just shared, he worked here for years. He was definitely about taking my shoes there, my old ass shoes. He had a little, little shed, and I'm talking about, yeah. But, but that would be an example of an accessory building, and he was there for your six grand, probably. But that would be a good example of that. I think that maybe adding an acreage, and you know, if you're not six thousand square foot lot, and we're, most of the development today is higher than C and C. So what you went off there on each block, you see there are six hundred square feet or what we're approving now would be much different than in a rural area. But I think like.
Yeah, but they want to do the same thing. Yeah, I mean, but like you talk about getting a building bigger than your house on a residential lot within like either a subdivision or, you know, not in rural areas, not where, not where Chris is. Impervious surface will get you before you get to the area. I mean, I just think, I mean, now if you've got three and a half, four acres and you've got a big house and you're going to put a building out back.
There's a lot of folks in our area that they're, they've got buildings larger than their homes.
Really? Well, yeah, I agree, but it's not going to happen a lot in smaller.
And there is a fifty percent cap also.
Fifty percent for what?
For the home occupation cannot exceed fifty percent of the dwelling unit square foot.
Right, but, but that is, that, that would not factor in.
Well, it would.
Right, for the accessory structure, you're saying?
So we just wanted to get your feel on if you were bored with this or not against that's kind of like.
Well, I'll tell you, if they're running a home business having the accessory structure for storage and that kind of stuff, it's almost. Almost have, yeah, it almost has to have. I mean, especially if you're limiting what they can do inside their home as far as part of the business is concerned. And we, there again, you brought up COVID. This thing has, has shoved, has shoved a lot of folks home. I mean, it has sent a lot of people home to do their business because they weren't able to do their business in public.
Right.
So, and you're seeing a lot more online businesses where people are having, having to be able to have stock. You're, you're seeing a lot of that kind of stuff now. And I think limiting them just to what is inside of their premises for their residence and then limiting them to half of that, you would be kind of a lot of people's hands in small business right now in this county. And I don't think that would be a plus to the county at all.
Exactly, and that's why, that's what we're going to do with the second one, because that is relieving from what is currently in the order. Which is all of those last two items, I think that's, you know, really honed in on that, which is the most important provision of the home occupation standards in the section as it minimizes any nuisance to any adjacent properties. As long as the home occupations abide by the standard, it should be of no consequence whether the issues is taking place in an accessory structure or a primary structure. And following that is, this would be business friendly for small business community as it provides more flexibility for home occupations. As you said, special rooms and stuff.
Absolutely. Well, there's no, there's, but there's still, there's no limit on the size of the accessory structure.
Well, we, we can limit it to fifty percent of our area.
Oh, and I'm not.
I've been wrong.
I'm, I'm more concerned about, I would be more concerned about the small lot that has an accessory structure on it than the big lot, the rural residential lot that can have anything on it it wants.
But I guess I'm still going back to that. Are you more worried about the square footage with the use of the home occupation or the fact that square footage is larger than the primary structure? Because if you're in the business from the outside, if you're on the road, is it the fact of seeing a larger accessory structure than the primary structure? Because that's really all, all that people are seeing in that.
No, but the issue with the use of the property is no longer accessory structure. The property is now a commercial use. That's why, that's why it's not a structure matter.
I agree with that.
It's a commercial purpose versus residential.
It's not a commercial.
Actually, most of the construction guys I know are working out of their truck. They've all given, they all gave up their offices in the last, the economic downturn, so they're all working out of their trucks. Few of them go on that now.
And this may also have been a more question from what Brian's saying is what determines the use of a home occupation? You know, we do have some of that spelled out, but with, like COVID is happening, people are doing more of these. What someone would have done, say, five years ago, considering home occupation may have kind of broadened the horizon for what people are now doing at home.
You guys might want to just take another look and come back to us with something on that. But you understand what our, what, what the concern is. You want to make sure, you don't want to, you don't want to dampen down home businesses, but you don't want people on a commercial business in somebody's neighborhood. Because it's, it's just because of, so we can't get too far afield.
And there may be something that we need to work on to support the building to, to see if there's something there, if there's a threshold that ties them to it finally being a commercial use. Exactly.
We'll further examine it and have a.
All right, so moving on, the next is our change of use process. Currently in the ordinance, we have a change of use section. And the way that it is currently specified for how we determine if it is a change of use, not necessarily how it is determined, but it references the fee schedule. So the way it is currently written, it says if it is in, within the same category where it says retail to retail, it does not charge a fee where it is two separate categories, then we do charge a fee. But it doesn't necessarily say when a change of use occurs and when a review and approval is needed. So this is to better clarify that for the first item there, saying to just remove the, the language of fee schedule completely out of that section as it's irrelevant and we can refer to the fee schedule that's online. And subsequently with that, looking at the categories for change of uses, we do have categories such as retail to retail. But I'm going to use, we have use categories, then uses within those categories. So we have a, for, you know, for this instance, a retail category, but within that we have, say, kennels, art studios, flea markets. All of those are within that category, which are vastly different and need review and certain standards to be applicable for each of those types of uses. So it wouldn't necessarily be accurate to say that going from retail to retail in that category should not require a change of use. So this is to better clarify that any change of use within our news table would require review of staff and approval. Tail on with that with the change of use process.
And that's no change of fault that we're already making that. And we always have for whatever reason, it just works that way.
Right. And tail on with that with the change of uses, we currently don't have any language that specifies which elements of the UDO should be addressed when we're reviewing these change of uses. So this is to, to better clarify some of those items, which as Kishy said before, and with this also, that we currently already do this. For one is to say the limited standards within section five point three, where each proposed use may have a limited standard for that specific use that are applicable. Whenever a change of use comes in for a proposed use that has those standards, we do apply those. Same with all street parking and loading requirements. We currently require them to make sure that they have adequate parking per hour parking calculation standards. Same with the required buffers for the adjoining properties that's determined by the adjacent, it's only districts that sometimes, that say about any residential use, and also the utilities downstairs recycling and trash handling requirements. So that's more of something that we already do, just with the housekeeping, I would say, to make sure that the ordinance specifies that. So if anyone currently comes in and wants to contest that, that I don't want to do any of these things, we have something to do there, which luckily is.
And a few years back, we were willing to look back, I'm sorry, say, we're willing to look back, make sure about that then. But this is just clear box, there's, there's no change in ever before.
This is the understanding procedure.
Any comments on change of uses?
No, let me just ask one question on this.
Sure.
Did there used to be some ordinance on major highway project properties about what you could put out there, what you could? We've obviously asked a very.
That was an overlay that was removed about seven years ago.
That's about, that's in the law, I assume.
No, no, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking there's just, even a lot of places like Route Seventeen, there's just, there's a lot of trashy properties along there. A lot of properties that haven't, nothing's been done with for a long time.
Abandoned property.
It could be abandoned, I don't know.
Well, on Seventeen, I do know of several, and we do have for properties that continuously get complaints whether they're in violation or not, or continuously get complaints or in violation, I think to them. But to, to them property, they can enclose it, make it safe, so nobody can access it, and it's still okay to sit there. But it doesn't cure the complaints that really do. So we have the community improvement program, or tuition program, and we go in and we'll work with the structure for that one. Because it's just easier than going around and around. And so can actually facilitate that program, and we're moving about ten to fifteen truckload a year from this to these one hundred thirty.
If you just get a whole year of money.
Yeah, down, right down the road on Seventeen from Lorraine, some guy came in and put in six telephone poles and then strapped six fire outlets, swimming pools to it, which on any big wind, it was awful. Okay.
All right, so outdoor display and storage surfacing requirement, question? Surfacing requirements around our storage areas are unclear. Currently, we don't have anything in the ordinance that specifies if there's any improved surface that's needed. Say if you have a commercial structure and they're going to store items in the back and they drive portable foul or trucks out, you know, moving things around. There's nothing in the ordinance that, that, that has that requirement for that improved surface that it remains grass currently. So this is to clarify, they move to add language to section six point two point two, outdoors play and stores to exclude that all area of use for outdoors play and storage shall be surfaced with the appropriate materials such as asphalt, concrete, dust, and jewel, gravel, or slate, and shall be maintained in smooth, well-rated condition. Any comments on that one?
I don't know. The future of your situations, it's going to come up. Being stored or displayed, or with display in situations where grass is very appropriate, we're of course going to be able to do that.
Absolutely.
And it's a cheaper alternative for them.
I agree, if someone's going to store, say, you know, a few items up, you know, to display, you don't want to have to put down improved surface just to display a few items. So there, I would say we probably do need to have better clarification for when that's required. This I think was more tailored towards, I said, outdoor storage.
But it says, in fact, mobile home or model home sales, but is that under a different category?
Okay, we'd also like to add geo grid, things like that, like L I D.
Right, yeah, exactly, and they, we do have an option of the geo, the geo fabric system for it being, or being purviewed to not add additional square footage to the impervious area. All right, so permanent use of the buffer area. Section six point three point four, permanent use of the buffer area discusses what may be allowed within the buffer area of a project, but it currently does not address subject items. So this is, this proposal is to add language to clearly allow subject items to be located in the required buffer area as long as buffer requirements are met. Keep in mind that the environmental health requirements will limit the location of subject items in relationship to property lines, easements, and structures, as well as limited plantings in subject areas. And this would provide more flexibility for applicants to sign plans. So apparently, we already have exemptions for certain items that can go in the buffer areas, such as, you know, the stormwater, potential ponds, fire hydrants, metal boxes, et cetera. So this is one more to just dock on to that. And as long as they're still meeting the buffer requirements, which within our buffer table, certain depth of buffer is required along with a certain amount of plantings, along with possibly a fence or wall. So as long as the subject area, the subject area can still go in that, in that buffer, but still should comply with the vegetation and/or fence. but still should comply with the vegetation and/or fence, wall, burn, et cetera. Any comments on that one? Moving forward, looking at the lighting plans. So currently a site lighting plan or photometric plan is required for all areas proposed for elimination that exceeds 40,000 square feet an area. So this proposal is to require lighting plans for all new non-residential development when lighting is required or provided. This will help ensure that impacts to adjacent properties are mitigated. So currently with a lighting plan, if it's over 40,000 square feet, which is just shy of an acre, if it's less than that and we don't require a lighting plan and which, that lighting plan is show a site plan and it has a dispersment of foot candles throughout from wherever you have your poles, and it'll show all of the property lines for what foot candles are, which is a way of measuring how much light is being shown per square foot. So on the elimination per square foot. So it shows along those perimeter lines to assure that there is not spillover of light on these adjoining properties. The way that it's written currently, any of less than 40,000 square feet does not require this photometric plan, and we have no way of assuring that, you know, that there's not that light spillover.
It's only good if you're dealing with small properties and the big problems.
Exactly, right. So it's actually going the opposite here.
Do you have the needs to test? Do you test it?
We do have.
Or do you just have a video?
They, they have to submit a plan. We do, a, that is usually supplied by Brunswick Electric or Duke Power, one of their subcontractors. We do have a light meter. I not rely on, I mean, because it is, it is such an exact, I mean, you need, really need a professional piece of equipment.
So that's what I'm saying, you're requiring large, smaller than an acre. If you're just having somebody give you a plan and nobody ever checks it to see if, if you don't have any means to check it, why are you having?
We do have the ability, we do have a contact at Brunswick Electric, who if upon request does have a more substantial and more sensitive light meter, and I forget the gentleman's name.
We have the ability to check that.
Yeah, we do.
But there, there's, there's site lighting people are happy to check it.
But I mean, do y'all, as a gen, do you do that?
We do not do it as an inspection.
We, we would do it, but we would visually see that there's a potential problem or we would get a complaint.
A complaint, you do, but.
But if we got a complaint or visually there appears to be a non-compliance, then that's when we would follow up.
And, and having this requirement with the photometric plan somewhat relieves us from having to do more of those inspections to make sure, because if we see the plan, they're setting those elimination standards correctly, they're gauging those per what they put in that photometric plan.
Which I don't think we need to do if anything was going, so I just think if you're having somebody do something, this adding cost of whatever they're doing, and then you're not even testing it, you're not even doing anything about it.
I will say if they're putting lighting, it's not a cost. They, B E M C are automatically provides.
They do that for free, you know?
It's a part of their.
So if you make them have a plan, that means you're going to make them put up the poles and all that, right?
If they're going to provide a plan, so that's if, when they are providing a light.
In some ways, they're going to do lighting. In some cases, they're going to do lighting, how long we would require it.
You know, if you're going to put two lights out on a half acre site, why you gotta, that's one more hurdle. I just don't, I think it's.
But if, but if somebody wants to put 20 lights on that same site, that's a concern.
The reason also, just to, so y'all know for commercial, this also impacts insurance because they want to make sure the property is lit. So there are more reasons as to why even the business wants a photometric plan to show that they're in compliance with lighting for safety, so for parking, for parking lots. And that is standard across the country for insurance policy. So it's not just for our, our purposes, a lot of times these are already provided.
And I think one other major issue too is the dark sky lighting. You know, Brunswick County, its project itself, it remains dark sky, and it's our ordinance that has allowed us to do that.
I'm getting, taking that from my B E M C for, for proof.
Oh, well, that's, I didn't hear you. I hadn't.
I just, I said, if, if it's not a big burden on people, it's always the outlier that gets you on these things. So it's the guy who's got the 6,000 square foot line and he wants to put 20 lights up there.
Right.
Over his car mark or something like that. That's, that's the one you worry about. It's not too, it's not a light in front of my bar or something like that.
So, but do we, do we have maximum foot candles?
Yes, we have minimum averages and maximums. So there is a bottom minimum for certain types of uses. So say in the non-residential, non-residential use parking areas, I'm not sure exactly after any ordinance, but there are certain specific items for parking areas for residential streetlights or.
But we don't, my, my whole thing is we don't, as a general rule, we make, this plan is provided, we have minimums in our ordinance, but nobody tests.
I, I assure that they comply with.
Only if you have a complaint. We, you cannot even have a new plan if you get a complaint, if you get tested. I, I just think it, whatever, one more thing.
Want to take, take another crack at that one?
Well, and do keep in mind, they already provided light plans.
What's that?
They do already provide.
Ninety percent of the time, we receive them anyway because B E M C or Duke Power does not want to put more lights than what they have. So they use this to assure that they're meeting those minimum requirements for insurance for that company. But at the same time, yes, so it, it kind of balances out in any way. They provide those, they, it's free of contract to make sure that the business and power company are making sure there's enough lighting, not too much for them to be charged, because I think they have to pay for, pay at least on each pole that's out there, if I'm not mistaken. So they find a balance on their own to make sure.
They may, that's for sure. And then they'll come back and tell you that you have to change poles, because your poles are over certified. So, yeah, we're in the process of changing poles, but we have a non-certified pole.
Well, so this is more over 40,000 square feet, non-residential, so it's more like a grocery store parking lot side, you know?
But now they're talking about everything.
We already do it very, we, we review light plans for all commercial.
Well, there's a difference in reviewing and requiring, but I mean, I'm saying, yeah, 40,000, I agree, that's, that's a big thing, but just anything is a little bit. What is, what is the board?
What's that?
What is, what person would you like us to go with?
Well, yeah, I'm, I would be a little concerned about the overload, but it sounds like, it sounds like either Duke Power or, or B E M C is going to get involved in any of those, and they'll make sure it's not overdone, probably.
They're depending on us to tell them what the standards are.
We have, we have two, there are two things here that I just want to make sure it's clear. We have, one side of it is, does the board think that we should always require lighting for parking lots, for non-residential parking lots is one side of this. The other side of it is, should we require this lighting plan? Because the way the current ordinance is written is that all non-residential parking lots require lighting, a minimum average or maximum foot candles across the board, no matter what, it is required for a parking lot. Subsequently from that, we then require a lighting plan, but only required if it's over 40,000 square feet. So currently we require lighting no matter what, but anything under 40,000 square feet, we have no way of assuring that except for if we go out there to inspect it with a light meter. So you have these smaller lots that say it's on a 10,000 square foot lot that have, you know, residential properties on both sides, say a Long Beach Drive or something. And we don't receive one of these photometric planes, and then we're going to receive a complaint about the fact that they do have lighting out there because it's all disrequired.
But we also see them in areas we drive around in.
You see what?
We see them when we drive around in areas as well.
Right. So it's, but one, two different things there is whether you guys think that we should always require this, like if say a small dentist office is open, they'll be open during the middle of the day, should we require lighting? That's one side of it, which is not part of this. This is really just to address the fact that currently the ordinance requires it no matter what, that we are always going to require outdoor lighting. This is just us buying that pretty much every lot is going to need to show that because it's already required. We don't want to have them being required to have lighting, but then it kind of being a free for all for them having however much lighting they want, and we have no way of really verifying that in the approval.
Well, they can't have whatever they want, because you've still got, no matter what size of lot is, you've still got minimums and maximums.
Absolutely, but we have no way of verifying it until going out there to inspect it, and then it's a, I think the point here is that we would rather be a proactive, reactive of us, go out there and then say, bring back what they just put in because of, you know, things like that. But this secures the fact that the money they're putting into this infrastructure for these lights.
I've got a question. So this might sound silly, but with, with inspection of light inspection with the meter, would that be done in the dead of night? Would that be done?
And that is a big issue because you have ambient light whenever you use these light meters, it's pulling in the ambient light along with from the light source. So you're never going to get the exact foot candle unless you go out there, like I said, in the dead of night, which I'll go out there and.
And I think, I think you have to also think about it, it's similar to our setback certification. We don't go out and use a laser, you know, survey equipment that we can verify that the setbacks are what they say they're on the site plan. We rely on a licensed surveyor who seals it and says that this, this structure is where it is.
That's an ASB, this is on an ASB lighting plan, it's here's what you need.
Right, but I mean, it's still, you are still relying on an expert to verify and.
Surveyor actually doesn't go out and do that, but somebody in the building code area, when they go out and inspect the footings and foundations, ought to be looking and saying, geez, this corner, this not corner for this footing, it's only supposed, it's supposed to be X number of feet away from the parking lot, and it doesn't look like it is.
But the surveyor does do that, the surveyor, and that's what he's talking about.
The foundation survey, foundation survey isn't required for commercial projects.
Correct.
Lighting isn't required for residential projects. So that's just important to differentiate.
But that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about someone verifying the survey of, on a site, an ASB survey verifies. Somebody who just turns in a plan saying, this is what my plan is going to be, that's not a verification that that plan is what it says it's going to be. That's what we're on.
Yeah, but the lighting, the lighting elements, I mean, they have got this down when they manufacture these elements. They are, they know exactly the amount of lumens or foot candles that these things are putting out, and they know based on the shape of the cone, where they're going, how it's, how it's going to project. I mean, they, they, they've got it down pretty good, these manufacturers. So yes, is it 100% accurate? I, I doubt it, but it is pretty darn close.
Enough to deter a complaint or a miss, or a missus coming from it, I would say, as opposed to if we did not require it.
Can, can we let you guys, you've heard our concerns, you want to, you want to take a re-draft of this one?
Sure. I'm stepping back into that one real quick. And that was a bipolar question, right? There was, there was two parts to that question. One was a requirement for the, the permitting, and one was the requirement for every parking lot to be lit in hours of darkness, no matter what. Correct? Two parts to that?
They're just talking about timing. Having the hat.
It's more of if you choose to light your parking lot.
Okay, you're not talking about they're not required, talking? The current ordinance in the lighting, in the lighting section, it does require all non-residential parking lots to be lit. It does specify that in the table. There's no, there's no way of writing, there's no exemptions to not having your parking.
Like there's, there's no, there's not, it's not required, it's optional, if they decide not to have one, and you do, do not have to put a lighting light. So that's why the ordinance is, is, would, would require.
So the way it's currently written is that.
For a commercial, it is required.
It, it is commercial or anything within the lighting, within the lighting use table, there are certain uses that require lighting for those types of uses. So in the circumstance for, which we're talking about here, it is for non-residential parking lots, it's required no matter what, no matter what size it is. Subsequently, it's, when it talks about a lighting plan, a lighting plan is only currently required when it exceeds 40,000 square feet. So my question to you guys is the twofold question, we're not really mentioning it here, but being that it's being brought up about the fact that, you know, Mrs. is concerned about whether this should be required all the time, is that we require, currently require lighting for all non-residential parking lots? Is that something that should either be amended where some parking lots may not need be lit? If it's the concern of this.
And what was my concern about not requiring lighting, it was just the plan for the small ones. If you haven't been having some big issue with smaller, you know, not having a plan. I'm not talking at all about removing the requirement for lighting.
Okay.
Just all I said was the plan, why? If you're not testing, you're not doing anything, but you're going to make them have a plan anyway. That was my concern, that's all I said. I didn't say not make them have lighting.
Right.
Plan makes me just dishonest.
But again, I guess getting in that, though, would you say that is this square footage relevant? Do you think it's more, needed more for a lot, a smaller?
Let me ask you, do you have more, do you have so many complaints or something about lighting of smaller sized plants that you feel, these smaller sized sites, that now there's some need to have them do a plan too?
I received, I, I received a lighting plan typically, no matter what, a part of the plan set, because B E M C or Duke Power are doing those. So this is just to be consistent with what we already do.
I just wondered what the reason was.
So you're getting the light thing?
For the most part, for the most part, correct. And typically when I go through my review comments for commercial development, it's one of those, this to require a lighting plan, but in some areas, the way it's worded now, should I request it only when it's exceeding 40,000 square feet for a parking?
Every commercial business has a parking lot, but I'm asking all the parts. We're probably going to have to have some of them, some of them.
Yeah, and you have to remember, once a tenant is a stormwater, you know, in terms of channeling of the unique things that is because of stormwater and maybe that they have to do, they have to have a professional do it. It could be very hard for the, kinds of, the plan. I work places where people.
They actually won't accept it from anybody who's not, unless they're licensed, it'll be signed by P E, because I tried to do one, and now it's dead down.
But they're not reporting that, they do all day, a lot of times, well, they can't do it by hand, and a lot of times they force things out without going through a formal engineer.
Right, you're still referring to a site plan?
Yeah, for, for.
Oh, for, for change of use, right, exactly.
But for a new site, it's too hard.
Right, almost always, stormwater is what takes a need for an engineer to track that plan, because they need to see the exact square footage of the period, so they automatically put in a management plan. So our plan, our, our ordinance doesn't necessarily require that 99% of complaints are coming in our engineers. All right, we'll, yeah, we'll dive into that one a little more, there's a lot to cover on that. This one will not take near as long, this is housekeeping for the most part, criteria for qualification for voluntary ag districts. The, the board, the V A D board changed the requirement, minimum acres for participation in the V A D program from 10 to 3 acres. So this proposal is just to correct the section 9.4.9.4C, criteria for qualification to reflect this change from 10. Right, agricultural tourism in districts other than RR. Use table provides that agricultural tourism is allowed in R 7500 with limited standards, section 5.3.2.5. States that the use is only allowed in a bond type farm. The proposal is to amend table 5.2 use table to remove R 7500 as a district that allows agricultural tourism, the permanent use subjects with limited standards consistent with 5.3.2.5. Agricultural tourism would be allowed with bond type farm specs. So currently, just the way that the, the use table was written compared to the limited standards, there's an inconsistency there. And this is really just housekeeping to make these consistent with one another. Also, to add the word districts to the list of allowing signings to section 5.3.2.3.5 for clarity, that's another just housekeeping item to just add that, that language in there. All right, a separation for accessory structures, another somewhat housekeeping item. Accessory structures are allowed to be located in less than five feet from any other structure, but this is not clear in the UDO. Currently, the way that it's written, it is setback for an accessory structure or Currently, the way that it's written, it is setback for an accessory structure or strictly the, strictly stated that they cannot be more or less than five feet from any property line, but doesn't say anything about any other existing structures, accessory or permanent structures. So this amendment is to just clarify that the accessory structure shall not be located within five feet from any structures along with the property line.
So would your two shades have to be five feet or?
Yeah, sure.
That's, that's a reply by building point two.
Not. The building code is a regular light, accessory structures have to be less than a certain amount of square footage.
It's under twelve feet, that's correct. If anything over twelve feet.
Doesn't, so, yeah.
Pretty soon. So this would still apply to, to restrict that as a law?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm surprised there's nothing in the fire code about this.
Because fire code doesn't.
If accessory structure happens to be six feet away from a house, you can never have that in a barn wall. It'd be much closer than five feet.
This one's allowed to be closer than five feet no matter what you do.
Yeah, right.
Exactly, that's correct.
Okay.
Which if I'm not mistaken, I think we've always done it that way. Is that right? And we've always required it to be five feet.
I was told years ago by building that they had to be five feet, but five would help me with three years.
Right, we're.
We say five feet from it, that's three feet.
It is near where it is.
All right, the next is, uh, from the section of utility dumpster recycling and trash handling facilities. Section six point eighteen is titled miscellaneous and solely refers to utility dumpster recycling and trash handling facilities. Proposal is to rename section six point eighteen from miscellaneous to utility dumpster recycling, recycling and trash handling facilities. You know, it's just the, uh, way that it's laid out, it has one section and only a subsection of one under that, so it's miscellaneous. And then the only subsection under it is utility dumpster recycling and trash handling facilities. So might as well get rid of the word miscellaneous.
This is just kind of a housekeeping issue pertaining to buffers for C P, our conservation protections in the district. Right now, our, our buffer table doesn't address it. So we want to add that to make it consistent with the R R district. So for example, if C P is adjacent to R seventy-five hundred, R six thousand is a point two, which is basically a ten foot buffer, and R thirty-two hundred, and C is the three or twenty-three foot, and so on and so forth. So it's just to provide that clarification there. Um, the next one is pertaining to, uh, open space and recreation area. Uh, recreation space to be provided in, um, P D's, uh, in the C L D. So a minimum of the space requirement provides office apartments for major subdivisions and plant developments for the R R, R seven five hundred, S Q R, R six, and R thirty-two hundred zoning district. The proposed amendment clarified open space there for major subdivisions and plant developments in commercial districts. So that's going to be your C L D and your, uh, N C district, uh, N C I. So it would basically be exactly the same as what's current. And we've always been doing this, it's just never really been in the U D O. So it would be identical to what's in S B R six thousand and R six thousand, which basically means it's seven percent open space for major subdivisions and twenty-five percent per plant development. And I just thought of this a moment ago and it's not up here, but I wanted to mention it. We also get, uh, questions about density requirements, of what's allowable in C L D and N C districts. And we always allow density. If it's single family, it's the same as S B R and R six thousand, which is seven point three dwellers per acre. If it's, if they're going to be doing multifamily, we've always allowed, uh, it density is consistent with M R thirty-two hundred. And it is in the ordinance, it's just not that clear. So if you want to do multifamily in the C L D, it's the equivalent of the M R thirty-two hundred district, which is thirteen point six. So I just wanted to mention that because I knew we're going to add that as well.
We get, we get calls a lot from the tent project, and that's why I wanted to clarify. Food design question.
And then notices and public hearings. So section nine, dealing nine point one, giving notices and public hearings, which provides, where projects require public hearings and provides the required notices. So there's a list of, of items that say what you need to do when each project comes up. So we would add male notices required for major site plans. We would add, uh, public hearing required at planning board for major site plans. Uh, we would correct the major site plan section referencing section three point one. So that's just a reference correction. Uh, then we would remove site plan multifamily developments category. Uh, because sometimes multifamily are permitted by right. Um, depending on the Z D district, say for C L D and M R thirty-two hundred, they would not be coming here. Um, so we're going to clarify that and then remove public hearing required by formula for special use permits. Uh, special use permits don't come here, they go, of course, in order adjustment section.
And lastly, is food trucks. First, I want to start out with, to tell you that we probably will not move the food trucks next amendment forward after next meeting. But in this case, we're going to be separate, we will. Uh, we had met with, we had several of the food trucks individually to talk about food trucks. We also watched it down with the food truck owners, I come with them too. Um, food trucks right now, um, are located in the heart of the ordinance. And the center's in Berry, but it like falls in the head more on lots of other real time and stuff. So it makes it a little bit difficult to, it's like fitting a square peg in a round hole. It, it just doesn't quite fit. Um, but food trucks have been becoming more and more popular throughout the U S and in Princewood County. Um, post North Carolina has seen a tremendous increase over the past few years. We've been approached by many food trucks, we've been approached by people that want to do, um, like a a place where food trucks can go just store their food. Um, so there's lots of different, um, people who admitted, you know, the food trucks out there. And we want to be able to accommodate them. We also have a problem with violations on food trucks. Um, I get more calls about food trucks than roadside vendors on the weekend than anything. Um, the fact that enforcement has to work some weekends because of food trucks and roadside vending. And so roadside vending and food trucks again have kind of been put together in the past. So we really want to separate them out because food trucks are much different than somebody selling couches or, or vegetables on the side of the road. Um, they have a lot of different things, um, a lot of different, um, they, it's so, so much different because they're selling food and they're, they're, um, they're not just pulling up, but they're some of them have tables and trash disposal. So they have a lot more different, different things going on. Also, from a permitting standpoint, they're a lot different too. They have to have a health department permit. They don't necessarily have to, of course, county health department permit, but they have to have a health department permit from a health department in North Carolina. So they're regulated by the health department as well. So there's lots of, we want this to, to make it slightly different. So what we're doing is we're trying to get your feedback too. We've talked to permissioners again. Um, and now we're talking with you. Um, so the first question is, where should food trucks be allowed? Um, should it be an accessory use? Now, I'm a little lit, and I'll let you guys have a discussion about. So is, should it be an accessory to an existing business, such as a brewery or office building, see this in Wilmington lot, where, where they allow them as an accessory use to an existing building? Or should they only, and, or should they only be allowed like that? Should they be on vacant lots? Um, we have a current violation case where we have a case where a food truck pulls up almost daily. Probably testify it, I would imagine maybe on the way here. Um, on the corner of seventeen and, and two eleven, um, we get complaints regularly about that site as well as that in other roadside vending. Um, should it be used as a, so as a primary use on undeveloped lot with no driveway and parking? Can they just be able to pull up? Should it be limited to commercial districts?
So they're doing business on somebody else's leased property, that's something, they don't own that leased property.
Correct, correct. But many times, we, we do have issues with, go, pull up on people's property they don't know, but a lot of times they do have owner's permission. And should it be allowed in residential use districts through temporary use process? So those are the questions that we wanted to kind of get your feeling on before we, um, continue investigating. We do research on a lot of different things. This is going to be the one that we're doing this year. We've done research on parking, um, interior to the department. Um, sometimes things go to a text message, sometimes just we have a lot more information. And so this will be the one that we're doing now. So what, what do you think?
We have tended to have food trucks in, in part, one of our middle dollar things.
What's our interview?
I, I said, we have tended to bring food trucks in to park in an amenity building and just dish out food and stuff. I don't know if that's, I never even thought about whether they should, they could do that or not.
And then you got, then I made one too.
Well, the first thing we need to remember is they're not brick and mortar.
They're not.
I mean, they're, they're made to be mobile businesses.
Yeah.
We, you're not going to be able to lock them into a, a permitted space or you just won't be able to brick and mortar store. I mean, that, that's, that's my first, that's my first thought on that. Now, the, the re- the residential or commercial part, I'm not real sure, I'm not real sure how, how to approach that. Uh, it is a commercial business. Could we, could you limit them strictly to commercial areas? I, I think that might not be appropriate, you know? Uh, you wouldn't want to pull them up on a corner block in a residential area on, on a cul-de-sac trying to sell food, you know, I, I agree. But at the same time, you wouldn't want them limited to, to a permitted area. You know what I'm saying? You wouldn't want them to have to get a permit to park in a little parking lot. And then a permit to park in somebody else's parking lot. And then a permit to park in somebody else's, because they're, they're doing what they're made to do. They're made to be mobile.
In our situation, our whole development was R seventy-five hundred, even though we have different kinds of space in there. If, if we prohibited in R seventy-five hundred, we, we probably prohibited any development.
That's correct.
So one thing to, one thing to address with the brick and mowers. A lot of other places will have like separation requirements. It has to be a certain distance from front door of an existing business. That could be a way to have some of those considerations. It can't be within five hundred feet of a restaurant. I may be a little extreme, but that's the kind of idea. We could apply those types of separation standards to address.
Well, and that would keep them in business in business area and keep them out.
It's probably pretty, yeah. Not that it exists, but typically it's like a hundred feet maybe at the most that we've seen.
And a lot of times, when they're open, if they're open. Um, there's a caveat that in a lot of the research that, that we read in other ordinances, that five hundred feet if they're open. So for example, um, we had one at the side of this grill, there's a permitted food truck that goes there or goes there now. But, um, so it was designed to be when they were open, so it needed. Um, so it would have been a lot of that, for example.
Yeah, any big city's got big lunch crowd that does carts and food trucks.
They're parked down the road.
Yeah, they're here.
What's that?
They're parked down the street.
Yes.
Yeah.
But they do have the, there is a restaurant separation.
Typically in big cities, you'll see, they'll actually have, again, actual parking spaces specific for vendors, whether it's hot dog carts.
They do get a, they do get a permit with a particular location.
Right.
If they want to change their location, pull it someplace else, they've got to get it.
And, and the counter complex actually has, has space for that.
So they're not in violation?
No, they're not. Not when they're located on the site, because it was approved for the site.
They have special, they have special places to park, like park, that's what it is.
And in regards to the zoning districts, I'd say that the, the neighborhoods, you're seeing a lot of food trucks in during this COVID era because there's not, there weren't that many places to go out and eat.
There are restaurants, I, I agree.
Right.
Yeah, one of the food truck drivers told, told me that he felt he was doing a huge helping service because he was, he went to deliver food. So if he would go and check to me, he would deliver. And so he, he was really excited and it was really a luxury for him to see what they were able to deliver to the seniors that, that had to cook all the time for themselves. And now, because they weren't leaving, he can provide. It was a really exciting story. So I, I know that they want to be able to go and do.
I think this one makes a lot more further research.
Oh, it does. That's, we're just getting your feedback.
I would hate to even start with all that. I really haven't spent any time looking into it to see what other areas do and how it works.
It's all across the board. It's very, some of them just don't allow them, some of them allow them. Um, Oklahoma allows roadside vending to food carts, um, more near on the side of the road or in the parking lot. Some people allow them in the parking lot and a parking space. Some of them say it cannot be in a parking space. It just, it varies. So that gets into our next.
Yeah, and, and I wanted to preface, we've spent more time on this than any other. And, and if you really want to blow your mind, we can start talking about ice cream trucks.
Yeah.
And that like totally, I mean.
Yeah. So for example, um, one controversial issue is signage. So allowing a sandwich board sign, for example. Um, requiring one trash receptacle, you know, a lot of places require that. Um, a lot of them, um, require, um, existing, to be in the existing parking area. Some of them require to be separate. Some of them have minimum requirements that cannot impede the flow of traffic within the, the parking lot. And, um, some of them have separation requirements, like, I'm just a little version before. Some of them have separation requirements for sidewalks, some have separate path for safety reasons throughout and a certain distance from drive aisles, I'm getting worked within the parking lot. Some of them have a separation distance for a front door of the food service establishment, um, as well as for firefighters. So those are some of the things that we saw that we wanted to, you know, see which ones you liked.
Well, I, I think the thing about they're not, they're not in business to impede on your brick and mortar. They're in business to provide service where there's not a brick and mortar.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I like the idea of not like, they would impede on your, your brick and mortar stores. Because I mean, that's their bread and butter as well. Uh, I, I think that, I think that's a great idea. But I do also believe that any, any commercial business that they have an agreement with to be in their parking lot should be fair game.
And one, just to address that, Mr. Wood, uh, one thing we propose just amongst ourselves is that a business, let's say a brewery, we'll just use a brewery as an example. You, you'll see food trucks a lot of breweries. If they have like a designated space on their site plan, that's all that matters. If you have food truck out there anytime you want, you know, within reason, but.
How would that, how would that affect the pre-existing? You've got thousands of businesses in Rock County already. So how would that, how would that affect the pre-existing businesses that also have that food truck to come and visit their staff? And be there, you know, and rotate through and stuff like that.
If they just updated their site, their commercial site plan with these standards, I think there's two different ways the staff is talking about where you have one that they permanently are updating their site plan to designate a space and have these certain spaces. And once that designation is there, then it's, it's allowed indefinitely, you know, with no time period. It's one way to go about it. Or another way would be like a temporary use permit where they would come in for a certain, yeah, like special event permit, um, where they, they.
The first one, it would be a space like the counter complex.
Uh, like you want a truck.
Right, so it would be, depending on who they choose for the mobile vendor to be, for the food truck to be. The second one would be more for the food truck, where they want to go on site A or site B. Um, it is a little bit confusing for some counties, like city towns and, and the county, a lot of times it's a joint jurisdiction they had there and too. That's another element that I've talked to the food truck.
And most of the municipalities have their own food truck regulations. Like, you know, the Boyd's, the West and South Ward, I'm not sure about that.
I think the beach towns do.
We've looked at, we researched about twenty different municipalities in the region, looking at different standards. And they're all, like what you're seeing on the slide here, it's all kind of across the board where, where it goes a little bit different.
And not with sanders, they're all a little different.
I can't imagine any site that we shop in somewhere that doesn't have two media establishments in it. But one of them might want something in there, but the other one might not, so.
Then there's another factor on with this as far as fees that you charge is if they do a, an update to their commercial site plan review, they are then allowing that indefinitely where in some places they charge an annual like food truck permit or something like that, where the county or municipality is, is getting income from, you know, from allowing these mobile food units, so.
The update work relationship, with any, for the updated regulations, our time there, fine.
Right, exactly. Where if we just allow it to be a part of an updated site plan for that commercial development, you know, we'll have to figure out as far as what fee we'll charge possibly for our same commercial site plan review, no matter what it may be, because they're changing their site plan, which could be, you know, quite a few hundred dollars, but it's only a one-time fee, that then is allowed there indefinitely, so.
Have you gotten the feedback from us that you can?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I appreciate it. And we'll, we'll make the, we'll have a whole, uh, circle probably, now, committee meeting with public. So that will lead us to the end. Um, just as a reminder, uh, we intend on bringing the amendments to the April twelfth meeting. If there's an amendment that doesn't work, we can always hold on to it. So one sixty D, the first set, are the ones that will have to go before July one. If we're not ready to move forward with the other ones, that's fine, we can hold on, it's, it's the one sixty D that we have to move forward. And we should put them in separate categories for that reason, um, because the first one's more housekeeping. Um, so April twelfth, our anticipated funding board debate, we are advertising and taking work for that. And, um, then after it goes through your recommendation and, of course, consistency, say at workshop, we'll, we'll, um, we'll, we'll send you the recommendations.
I'd just like to say, I mean, we've all, we've always had great respect for the, for the folks at staff, but you got some young people coming up there, really smart. It's amazing how much they know about everything that's going on, like, like, both you guys.
What about the cell phones, what we?
I'm sorry?